There were trustees who felt gee, we opened the door and we were getting, you know, the video cafes and we're not really helping some of our existing businesses. And as I said in prior memos, you can't favor your in-town businesses to the exclusion of the new businesses. But, you know, that was the thought process at the time. Now, one thing you can do together, I'll just raise one last issue, and that is even with existing, there's a, you have the ability to say these are going to be the rules going forward, and even though they may have a vested right, they may have five machines now, and you were, and let's just say for the sake of argument, we're not going to allow more than three per establishment. You would have, you could take that away by amortizing it over a reasonable period of time. So if they already have five, you know, then there is an ability, if you provide proper notice and due process, that you could actually take some away, even some that has vested rights, but that's obviously much trickier and, you know, but that is something that can be looked at as well. Right now, I think the focus of what we'd be looking at in our amendments are stopping, you know, the cafes where the primary use is just video gaming and other things.
All right. You have direction?
Yes.
All right, very good. Next item on our committee of the whole meeting is under Finance and Golf Committee Chairman Dany.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The first item is proposed tax levy. I'm going to ask Jeff take over, please.
Thank you Chairman Dany.
Cut notes, Jeff, cut notes.
I know in your packet this evening, I outlined a memo that details our 2015 property tax levy, and I put together a PowerPoint presentation to briefly give you the highlights of this tax levy. The village levy is a property tax basically for three purposes: to help fund our general fund operating expenses, to pay for principal and interest on our general obligation bonds, and to pay for the village's contribution to the police pension. One of the things that complicates this tax levy a little bit, as we learned a couple years ago, is that the village is a multi-county municipality and levies a tax that is obviously distributed to these three counties. The Department of Insurance trues up what is called a burden factor, and it's the percentage of the tax levy that's attributed to each county. So with this tax levy, Cook County represents a little over 38 percent of the burden, DuPage County represents 61.96 of the burden, and right now, Kane County is undetermined, but I can tell you that Kane County, we have one or two parcels and it represents only .19 percent of the total burden. So taking a look at our timeline to approve this levy, in April of 2015, the Village Board approved the dollars in this tax levy through the budget process. May 1st, our budget year began. Right now, we start the tax levy process by having the first and second readings and approving an ordinance approving the tax levy. Once that goes into effect in March of 2016 through December of 2016, the village will receive Cook County taxes, and in June of 2016 through November of 2016, will receive DuPage and Kane County taxes based upon this tax levy. The most important part of this levy is that it must be filed by the county clerk's office no later than the 4th Tuesday in December, and the timeline that we're proposing puts us on schedule to do that. Taking a look at the levy in total, the 2015 proposed levy is $9,265,478. It is a decrease of $174,416, or 1.85 percent from the 2014 extension. You can see in the numbers that we continue to keep the general corporate levy flat from last year. The police pension levy has been reduced 7.39 percent. That is specifically due to positive investment returns and lower actuarial expenses that came out this last year. And we again are holding the line on debt service, keeping that levy flat, and we have some proposed abatements to be able to do that. So expanding on the proposed debt service levy and the abatements, again, we have three general obligation bonds that are outstanding and we're required to pay principal and interest on those bonds. The 2007, '09, and '12 general obligation bonds total $1,968,139, and we're proposing to abate $284,225, and that will bring our total net levy for debt service to $1,683,914, again, flat from the 2014 levy. One of the more important components of trying to estimate a tax rate is looking at our equalized assessed values within the village. You can see going back to 2010, we've had some significant decreases. We've slipped under a billion dollars, but in working with Paul Hines of the DuPage County Clerk's Office, Paul is estimating that property within the village and throughout DuPage County, a good conservative estimate would be an increase of about 2 percent, and that will increase our value throughout the village by a little bit more than $19 million. So I think we're hopefully now coming to a position where we're starting to see values, homes increases, commercial properties increase, expanding our equalized assessed value. Taking a look at our tax rates, and I'll start off with Cook County. Again, the burden factor, if you look at the top of this table, is 38.04 percent. We've estimated the EAV to be a little bit over $345 million. So the total Cook County tax rate based upon the levy dollars and the burden factor that's applied will be $1.0532 per $100 of valuation, and it is a rate decrease of .05, 5.7 cents, I should say. And again, EAV increase, and we lower our dollar levy, that tends to drop the rate. So we'll see hopefully a rate decrease in Cook County. Looking at DuPage County, again, burden factor of about 62 percent and $620 million in EAV. We're estimating a tax rate of .8922 cents per $100 of EAV, and that comes out to a decrease of .02 cents from last year. So the overall EAV and levy, as far as our rate, total village rate, would be .9562 cents per $100 of EAV, and it's going down, excuse me, less than a penny. Comparing our tax levy to the other taxing districts, in DuPage County, our share of the pie is 8 percent on our tax bill, and you can see the breakdown of other taxing districts with the school district being the largest out of all the taxing districts in the village. Same thing holds true in Cook County, we're right about 9 percent based upon the taxing districts that we compare to, again, with the school district being the highest. So looking at the final timetable, this property tax levy in our next meeting will establish the estimated levy. We'll advertise for a public hearing on November 2nd. We'll hold that public hearing on November 17th. We're scheduled to adopt the levy on December 1st and file the levy by December 12th. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have on this tax levy.
How does Paul do his calculation? Is it just based purely on the sales over the last 12 months?
Sales, and I think he works with the assessor's office in all of the townships.
Does the Cook County side weigh in on that estimate at all?
Cook County's, no, they're a little bit more different because they assess triannually.
Yeah.
And we are not in a triannual reassessment year. I think we're in the second year.
When those houses get built, we'll probably go a little bit above point, what'd you say, .9 percent?
.19 percent.
Yeah.
In Kane County.
Yeah, when that development gets built in Kane County, we'll have a little more equalized value out there.
I think that'll be our first residential.
Yeah, first residential, yeah. So. It'll be even more complicated.
Absolutely.
Did they calculate the burden factor right this time around?
I can tell you, yeah, with the problems that we had two years ago, DuPage County, Kane County, and the Department of Insurance are working very closely with each other. It was corrected last year, residents of DuPage County should have seen a pretty substantial decrease in their tax bill.
Yeah.
So I think they're on top of it.
Well, let me ask.
No, Paul is.
Let me ask you one last question with regards to the police pension. You show a decrease in the extension, 7.39 percent. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but how well-funded is the police pension plan?
Very well-funded. We're 81 percent funded.
Okay. Do you recommend that we fund it further, or is that actuarially an appropriate place to be?
I recommend that we always fund based upon the actuarials required contribution. I don't think there's a need to overfund the police pension fund at this time.
Okay.
Certainly always recommend that we always fund the ARC.
Yeah, absolutely. I just didn't know if you saw any benefit to overfunding.
No, I think we're in great shape as far as what we contribute to the fund.
Great, thank you.
Good. Okay. Thank you, Jeff, for putting that into layman's terms for us. That was a really good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been an outstanding job. Next item we have is the utility tax slash food and beverage tax discussion, and if you can survive a little more comment, we're going to ask you this, I'm going to ask you this.
Hopefully I won't swallow my tongue this time. At the committee meeting of September 15th, the committee discussed the potential of implementing a food and beverage tax, and we also had continued discussion on the gas and electric utility tax. The committee had requested additional information on specifically the gas and electric tax. Currently, right now, the village charges 5 cents per therm for natural gas. 5 cents is the maximum that we can charge per state statute. On the electric utility tax, we have a max rate of .61 cents per kilowatt hour. Not we, I should say, there is a max rate. We were asked what the max is on the rate that can be charged on the electric utility tax, and it's .61 cents per kilowatt hour. ComEd does add an additional 3 percent to the rate for administrative costs. Currently, the village has a rate of .0146 cents per kilowatt hour for the first 2,000 used, and the rate does decrease as consumption increases for the resident of the commercial business. The maximum amount of revenue that the village could generate for the electric utility tax would be about $1.3 million, and I've included a chart that looks at our neighboring communities, what the gas utility tax rate is that they charge, and also what the electric utility tax rate is that these communities also charge. In the memo, we have other information regarding what we had discussed on September 15th and some of the other revenue options or comparisons that are out there. So with that, I'll throw it out there for additional discussion and answer any questions that you might have.
First, I would like to eliminate our gas tax. I think it's an unfair tax to our residents. I think some residents pay very little come the winter months, and some residents pay an outrageous amount just in a tax. And the way I look at it is the electric tax is more consistent, and most residents pay a consistent amount every month. So it makes sense to me to eliminate the gas tax and make the electric tax to the maximum legal amount, which is, you know, what all our neighboring communities, Hannover Park, Hoffman Estates, Carroll Springs, pretty close, and I think that's more of a fair tax, and it's really not that big of an amount on people's bills compared to some people's natural gas bills, and I think that's the way we should kind of lean. I don't know what other people's thoughts are on this.
My thoughts on taxes are always no more new ones.
Well, we're not really creating a new one.
I don't, this is a really interesting report. It seems that we've been the lowest, which is really a pride thing. I think that's great, and the utility tax dollar amount per therm, is that part of the charm of Bartlett possibly, that our electric taxes are really low?
Well, I can tell you, in 2012, that was just the way we had tried to develop a budget amount. We maxed out the gas tax and then came up with the dollar amount we needed for the electric, and that was the amount per kilowatt hour that we're charging.
And in respect for Trustee Hopkins' comment, would it have been more fair, I guess? Because I agree with him that people have the ability to flip lights off and on, but some houses use a lot more gas than others, so maybe in hindsight, it might have been more logical to max the electric and not the gas.
Well, let me ask the question this way. Let's say, you know, we did eliminate the gas utility tax, okay? We're going to lose, I don't know annually what we would lose. Do we have?
1.1 million.
1.1 million. Is it possible that we could make that up if we increase the electric utility tax?
Is that 1.3 the total amount, Jeff, or is that the additional amount, the 1,300?
We're generating 1.1 million right now for the gas tax and 300,000 right now for the electric tax.
So 1.4?
Yeah. Yeah, so.
So we'd have to increase that by?
1.3.
Four times, correct?
I'm sorry.
Roughly, we'd have to increase our electric tax roughly by four times.
In order to generate the 1.3 million, which is the max, we'd have to max out the electric rate, which is .61 cents per kilowatt hour by state statute.
Well, I think we should get rid of both the gas and the electric utility tax, but given the numbers that we're discussing, I think it makes sense to shift that burden on the electric side because you can maximize efficiency, and would we also include as part of this change the food and beverage tax? Is that the intent?
I'm not interested.
Well, I don't think that we should look at the food and beverage tax right now. I think what really, that's really going to be touchy, but here's something to get back to the residents. Let me ask the, make this simple for me. For, let's say, a $100 electric bill that somebody has right now, they're paying, what are they paying now? Just roughly.
I.
I know, I can't figure it out.
Because it's based on kilowatt hours.
Right.
It's dependent on how many they use to get, a $100 bill, you have kilowatt hours and you have a delivery charge. I wish I could give you the answer off the top of my head. You know.
What I'm asking.
Five dollars a month.
Right now, we're at, you know, the 0.146, and I'm trying to relate that to something tangible. If my electric bill, if someone's electric bill is $100, what are they paying? Now, if we increase it to try and make up for the, to try and make up the 1.1 million, what would my electric bill be at that point? What would I pay for $100, you know?
Yeah, that's.
You can't do it.
Can't do it right now. I have to run the numbers.
I'm trying to get some balance.
Yeah, what the burden is on the resident, yeah.
If we did eliminate the gas tax and generated 1.3 million in an electric tax, what kind of shortfall would we have?
$100,000.
So we'd only be out $100,000?
Where did the shortfall come from? I don't understand. Explain with it how you.
So could we just borrow from our fund balance since we're, I think we're over on our fund balance, to just come up with the $100,000?
And while you're looking that up, Jeff, this rebate that we provide is only natural gas for the senior citizens?
It's, it's for both.
Both?
I think, I apologize, when I look back at my memo with September 15th, for both the electric and the gas, we're generating 1.705 million. So to answer Trustee Hopkins' question, it looks like we'd be about $600,000 short.
Does that include the reduction to the electric that we?
Yeah.
Right. I want to make sure I'm clear on this. So if we eliminate the gas tax, now we're looking at $600,000 annually.
Yeah, because we could only generate 1.3 million in the electric.
All right, so we're at 600,000.
No, 400.
We'd be, there'd be a $400,000 shortage.
105 in the home. I think with the way that this electric tax goes down over usage, that's not a possibility with gas.
Right.
Okay.
The thing I'm worried about with the electric tax, if we do anything with it, we have a lot of businesses out there, Brewster, that generate an awful lot of power. When I had my own company, our electric bill, just on a monthly basis, would range anywhere from $16,000 to $18,000 a year, a month, a month. I mean, that's how much power we were generating. It was just unbelievable, and, you know, I would hate to see something like that be a detraction for anybody in the.
There's a lot of different scenarios, and unfortunately, there probably will be some businesses and some residents that'll be affected negatively by that.
Well, let's see. What I'd like to see is get rid of the gas utility tax, leave the electric alone, and impose the food and beverage tax, because I don't agree with.
No, I don't either.
I'm sorry, can I finish?
I was agreeing with you.
Okay. By reducing the 6 percent gas tax for the businesses and imposing a 3 percent, that's a net minus 3, I don't think that's going to cripple them. I think it's going to reduce a big burden for the residents who, and it's, in the last couple of weeks, there's like 28 homes in my neighborhood that are for sale, so I'm not sure if it's the utility tax, U-46, or just the state of Illinois in general that they're probably wanting to get out of town. So I think this was presented as a package deal, and yes, we're replacing one tax with another, but I think the burden is taken off of the residents. We're also giving a little bit of a discount to the businesses by removing the 6 percent utility tax, gas. Leave the electric alone, there's a purpose for that. I think we're trying to upgrade our lighting system in town by going from the incandescent to the LED. That's supposed to save us probably $60,000 a year in our electric bill. So we're not going to be losing any money, and according to Jeff's figures, I think if we put the 3 percent food tax we're going to, or 4 percent, we're going to be looking at close to a million dollars right there. So we're replacing one with the other, but it's giving the people who have actually come to the meeting and asked us to take the bite out of the winner with their heat bill that we didn't listen to them. So I think that's where we need to go.
Well, as much as I certainly am in favor of reducing taxes as much as we possibly can for our residents, I still have some concerns, some serious concerns about adding tax to the businesses and how that potentially can affect the.
Plus 3, minus 6.
Huh?
Plus 3, minus 6. What's the net effect?
It's not the only thing that goes on when you add a tax to a business. There's a lot of paperwork, there's a lot of other things involved when you're starting that type of, down that road, so.
But we're not attacking the businesses.
This is not that simple. I've already had one person I talked to who said, well, somebody told me I was adding 3 percent to my bill for an extra tax, I just wouldn't go back anymore. And that's just one person talking, and so I don't know how that would affect a larger population. It may only be a little bit, but to some people, they react to a little bit. So I do have some concerns about the imposing another tax, so to speak, on businesses in Bartlett that are struggling to begin with. And secondly, I'm just concerned about the state. I mean, does this, being it's a utility tax, doesn't, the state isn't involved, I'm guessing, right? So no issues there, but other income coming in from the state has certainly been depressed, correct? Yeah. And so we'd hope at some point in time that changes, but for now, are we hurting ourselves by doing any of these cuts, or could we be potentially hurting the village?
You bring up a very good point. You know, maybe we should just table this, find out specifically what's going to happen, you know, with Springfield and whatnot, just sit back and let's just not react too quickly and just take a look at this in a month or so, or two months, once they have a budget in Springfield, I don't know. But this is very difficult.
Well, let's modify your proposal. Let's ask staff, as you're going through next year's budget, to look for even more ways to cut, anticipating that we'll have some resolution at the state level, knock on wood, but we'll also be able to take care of the need for the tax in the first place on the expense side. So we take a more balanced approach and amend the budget, the upcoming budget, to reduce the need for that tax so that we can throttle down the gas tax over time, which is what we tried to do with the electric tax.
Yeah. You know, I need to ask you a question on that. You've been here, you know, a couple of years longer than I have been, but, you know, we sat through the budget hearings, and I know what the board did and what staff did to try and keep the budget. We saw that with the levies that we looked at this evening, you know, what a great job they're doing. But what frightens me is sooner or later, we're going to have to start spending some money to maintain the services and the quality of life that we have here. So, you know, I agree that, I'm sure that we'll look at the budget again in fine detail, but I'm not necessarily sure that that's the answer that we should have for long term.
I think that's a good point, Trustee Dany. At a memo outlining the number of positions we have not filled since we took this position, which I think is great. I think staff should be tremendously commended for dealing without those personnel, but it is not a real efficient way to run a village. And like I've said before, Rome didn't fall in a day. You know, you can live without some people for a while, but eventually, people are going to get frustrated. And if we're confident with our, with the way that our new auditing firm is doing our audit, that we're efficient and things are ran well, and I don't think that we need to keep looking for ways, I agree with you, we need to look for ways to be very efficient, but on Trustee Dany's side, you've got to make sure that you're maintaining the quality of service that this village demands.
Absolutely, and I think it's important to express that desire, though, to keep the budget to the minimum that we can to function efficiently and appropriately and provide services. We've had that discussion every time there's been a budget. So I don't think there's any difference there.
Is there a way, I mean, let me just take a stab at this. I agree with Trustee Hopkins that, and I wish that I would have been. I agree with Trustee Hopkins that, and I wish that I would have been smart enough about electric to ask this question, you know, what determines what? I didn't realize we're on a graduating scale. But in hindsight, you know, I think we have the humility here to be able to say, hey, the winter is coming, is there a way that we can juxtapose the cuts that we made from gas into electric without making any changes at all, but at least move the burden to the electric and take it off the gas? Is there a way to do that?
Absolutely.
So before we, then we can go into budget next year with this thought in mind, saying, hey, let's work out ways that we can get rid of this whole deal. But this way, we're.
Change the ballot.
Yes. Does that make sense, Tim?
I think that sounds like a good.
It's not a final solution, but at least it allows us to not worry about what the state's gonna do for funding. It allows us to have the same amount of funding that we're gonna have for tax purposes, but then it also adjusts the burden from those folks that do spend a lot more in gas to electricity.
I think we should look at what we've generated so far in our gas tax, and I propose an ordinance to eliminate the gas tax, and whatever the shortfall is, borrow from our fund balance to fund it. I think that's the way we should kind of go. Because we're.
Again, that would be a policy the board, we certainly can build that scenario into our upcoming budget.
And I think then we can go into the budget next year, and if we have to bring back the gas tax or alter our electric tax, we can do so then. And, you know, I think we're, I don't know how many months into this budget, but we've generated, you know, I'm gonna venture to say over 100,000 or so maybe in the gas tax. So maybe we can look at that from a policy decision and.
If we're looking at taking from the General Corporate Reserve one year.
Yeah.
Certainly that's doable. I think to build anything in perpetuity is certainly not fiscally long-range wise thing to do, but if it's one year, that's something we could certainly build into our upcoming budget purpose.
I would caution us to think in that direction, just because of the fact that we, especially until we know which way the state's going on some things.
Right.
I don't want to keep going up and down and round and bound with this stuff personally.
I don't think the state's ever really gonna get their act together, so.
Yeah, we don't know.
Can I suggest that we look at this again with those flipped, and maybe if we can try to come up with some hardcore examples of what it means to a homeowner and what it means to a business when we switch those two around? Is that possible? Is it too much work to try to figure out?
You know, we can work with both of those utilities to try to get a grip on that and have our municipal representatives help us with that as well.
Yeah, I think a knee-jerk reaction to eliminate everything is a little harsh, but I think.
I think this is a very good compromise.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to try to understand how we could flip the two, and I certainly understand, growing up in a very breezy house in Iowa, how much difference there is between one house and another, so, and you do have the ability to turn lights on and off.
But again, I want to just reiterate and say, you know, we have to keep in mind the businesses that we have and our industrial parks, and if they're large, if they use large amounts of electric.
If we can get that information, that'd be great, yeah, how it would impact. I mean, we don't really know from my standpoint, I don't know, I'm not gonna talk for anybody else, how much difference the impact is for major business with gas versus electric, you know? I don't know the, and there's, those are static numbers, so we should be able to figure that out.
We'll take a stab at it. The only problem that I typically have is we don't get usage reports from individual businesses or residents.
I know, but one of the things we could do is just reach out to them and say, hey, you know, go to their bills department and say, hey, we're doing a little research here for the village, and make sure that we aren't really stepping on anybody's toes, can we figure out what you're using?
Okay, we could reach out.
Yeah.
We don't necessarily have to disclose the names of the business.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you. That concludes everything we had under Finance and Golf.
Thank you, Trustee Danny, Chairman Danny. With that, that's the end of our committee. The whole meeting under a ten motion to adjourn.
To move.
Moved by Trustee Danny, seconded by Trustee Cameron. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.